At this time, I will call the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Here this evening, we do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? One item I would note, Agenda Item Number 13, the presenter is going to be presenting remotely, and the presenter is not available till 6 o'clock. So when we get to that point, I assume it won't be 6 o'clock by that time, so we'll just move on, and then we'll come back when he's available. Any other changes to that or clarification to the agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be, consider the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on February 14, 2023. The council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
Move approval.
Second.
By Craig, seconded by Steve to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We will move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda Item Number 2 is Project ST 001, 2023. This is chip sealing on various city streets. We have a resolution to consider that would accept a bid and award the contract. I'll call on Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works, City Engineer, to present this. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. You've got the bid tabulation included in your packet. We took bids, received them on February 21. We received four bids. The apparent low bid came from Allied Blocktop Company of Maple Grove, Minnesota, in the amount of $225,430.5. This is a little ways over budget, where we have $170,000 included in our street department line item budget. Upon award, staff would look to work with the contractor to reduce project quantities to get us in line with our budget. How we would intend to do that is kind of outlined in the memo, where we've kind of stricken through certain streets, and we would try to manipulate project quantities or reduce project quantities to get on budget. So with that, staff would recommend that we move forward and attempt to seal coat as many roads as we can with the budget that we're allotted.
Okay. Questions for Jason?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve.
So I was honored to be able to ride with the plow drivers this past storm, and I was really amazed, learned a lot. But one of the things I saw was that a lot of the chip seal, as we're plowing, ends up in people's driveways. So tell me, how does this benefit the road? Does it actually last to the durability of the road when the chip seal gets plowed right off?
Sure.
And is there a better alternative?
Yeah. Great question. We do believe there is longevity added to the life of the road by doing these treatments. MinnDOT District 8 still believes that as well, and they do a lot of testing at the state level through overall districts, at the Min Road facility and across the many different districts in different climates across our state. The consensus is that there is a benefit there. It's hard to quantify exactly what it is, but there is a benefit. And specifically, the sooner you do it on a new bituminous paved surface, the better. Testing indicates that fracture strength is increased when you do it sooner. So if you get it within the first year or two, you see higher fracture strength, which should correlate to less cracking in the pavement. So...
Why don't they just mix the chip seal in with the bituminous in when they're laying it?
Sure. And the bituminous has rock mixed in it, and there is a mixture. But what you're trying to do is provide a protective layer on the structural mat, a protective layer on top to protect from oxidation, weather, water, air, all of the environment. You do see chip loss. That's a natural occurrence. We can do things to help mitigate that, like by fogging on top of the seal coat. You see on a lot of highways, they do that. We've chosen not to do that in our city limits, because it just takes longer to do, and it costs extra money, and we've just chosen to not do it. The last few years, we've gotten really great product, we think, out of our seal coat project. I think since I've been here, we've had one year where we were a little less than satisfied with the result, and there were some factors at play there. But we do believe there's a benefit, and we do believe it's worth it, and we believe it's most worth it on the new sections of roads and keeping them with a good seal coat and keeping them covered. So...
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, you do have the recommendation. What is the, are the wishes of the council?
I move approval of the recommendation to seal coat up to the limit of $170,000.
Well, second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items on the consent agenda up on the screen. And those items include, consider authorization to declare vehicles a surplus property for the Marshall Police Department, consider the approval of the garbage and refuse haulers license renewal, consider the approval of the 2023-2024 Township Fire Service Agreement rates, consider approval of an amendment to the community services organizational structure, consider approval of amended wage schedule, consider the approval of the 2023 workers' compensation insurance and a recommendation policy for volunteer services, consider the approval of liquor liability insurance through Illinois Casualty Company, consider the approval of the service agreement for the concession errors at Amateur Sports Complex, consider the approval to allow alcoholic beverages at city-owned facilities and parks, and finally, consider the approval of the bills and project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purpose of separate discussion?
I would like 6, 7, and 8.
Any other item? If not, is there a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
It's all moved. Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. Motion passes. So we'll move then to Agenda Item Number 6, and I would assume Agenda Item Number 7 is related to 6.
Correct. I like to tie them together. And Sharon and I had a conversation earlier today, and I would just, it saves the city money, but she's going to do a much better job explaining it than myself. So I just want the community to know that we're not, even though we're adding wages, we're saving money, and I will let Sharon explain it.
Okay. So in December, on December 13, 2022, the council voted to adopt a revised community services organizational structure. And at that time, I stated that there'll be some additional work on this structure change, because we did not go into great detail with existing staff on job description changes, revisions, and then the resulting comparable worth pay plan impacts from those job description changes. We did, and this is in the packet, present, what you see there is the current structure that was presented on December 13. The park superintendent was going to take on additional role in terms of supervision of recreation, and thus the title Park and Recreation Director. And then our community ed coordinator was going to take on some additional role in terms of adult community center supervision. And there was also some education requirements for that particular position. City administrator would assume some of the director responsibilities that was no longer in the new organizational structure chart. We did eliminate the Community Services Division Director. That is still the case. The revisions to job descriptions for Park and Recreation Director and Community Ed Coordinator did result in a comparable worth plan update, because they are taking on more. So the value of those two jobs does not equate to a previous director position salary or range. And I don't know if I'm answering your question correctly, but we're way, way under where we used to be in terms of salary. So we do, however, have to appropriately rate the jobs for the additional duties that were taken on. So the proposed structure, you'll see a slight variation. Park and Rec Director is now Park and Recreation Superintendent, and that was a result of the comparable worth consultant recommending that title. And the Community Ed Coordinator stayed the same in terms of that title. Their DBM, we call them the job value rating, did increase, and that is in the packet as well. One other proposed change, this is something that was not presented on December 13, and that is to hire a full, a permanent part-time office assistant receptionist. And we feel that financially, this will be equal to current staffing. We always had a temporary office assistant. We currently, in the last probably two years, have utilized a kind of temporary part-time assistant, on average, put in 16 hours a week, and currently still fills in some time. So that is one change from December 13. We're looking at a 24-hour-a-week office assistant, part-time, just to kind of build some stability. Otherwise, we've had really a revolving door in that. We have an upcoming FMLA leave, which is 12 weeks without an administrative assistant. So we're going to need a little bit of time there, but beyond that as well, we really need that office assistant receptionist part-time. So really, two action items. The first one, number 6, is to approve the amendment to the structure, which means the addition of the permanent office assistant receptionist part-time. And then number 7, it results in the new job value ratings. And I could go into a little more dialogue on how ratings are kind of valued and or determined in terms of job, education, technical aspects of a job, licensing, experience, different job tasks, supervision is a large factor, responsibility. So many different factors that go in into the rating. As you work your way up in the comparable worth plan, you'll see a little compression. There's not the same amount of movement as you work upwards as there is at the lower, or the lower ranges of the comparable worth study. So some movement kind of relates a little bit to that as well, in terms of how much room there is, because if you move people up, you gotta, you might have to move the top, and that's currently probably not what the council wants to do, and we're no way in any shape or form promote that as well. So that's just a little background. I can totally get into financial numbers, too. But we're really making up the difference with existing staff, and that was the intent of the structure change. We really felt we could do it, and that's why we proposed the structure change back in December. So...
So the short answer is the city's saving money?
It is, and that was never the intent of the structure change. And so I just want to reiterate, and I think I said that on December 13, that was not the intent. It was more about kind of efficiency and, you know, really not needing the position. It was never intended on, oh, we're going to save money, and this is what we're doing. It was not a budget reason.
No, but people questioned the raises, and that's what is explained now, that at the end of the day, we're not spending more money than we did in December.
No.
And that's, I make a motion to, I just want that explained, so I make a motion to approve. Item 6, first, I believe. Yes, item 6.
Motion by Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Steve. Discussion? The only discussion, thanks for bringing that up, and thank you for that thorough explanation. So thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Now, we'll move then to Agenda Item Number 7, which is also part of that explanation.
Yes, and I'll make a motion to approve that, too.
Motion by Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda Item Number 8 is, consider the 2023 workers' comp insurance and the policy for our volunteer service. Jim?
I had this take air-pulled, because, well, this started way back in December. As most people, if you pay attention, this was pulled off the agenda on December 20, what our meeting was, 28th, 27th, because we got the offer of another company to sell us workers' comp. Through diligent work of the staff, the insurance agent, the finance committee that met last week, I just want to toot the horn of the city and the staff and all of us involved. This is saving the city $146,000. I can't see the number right in front of me. $146,072. That's a huge, huge savings. It's 1.7% of our levy last year. So I just think credit to all those who jumped on board this, all those who took a look at this and saved the city money. This is a good thing that we did. So I just wanted to make sure that's noted. So I'll make a motion to definitely approve this.
A Jim, second by Craig. Discussion?
So, Mr. Mayor, I was in the Finance Committee, and one of the things, this Councilman, Berluzinski, is correct. It's saving us a ton of money. Workman's comp is something we, as the city of Marshall, are very blessed. We have very few claims, and that's what keeps our rates low. And hopefully, that's true going forward. So we're going to depend on the administrator and all the people who are supervisors to keep our workers in the city and city employees safe and out of the workman's comp field. That being said, this is not totally without risk, because there's a huge dichotomy, like you said, Jim. This is $146,000 difference. Lots of questions come up on, how does this other company give us $146,000 rate cut compared to the League of Minnesota City? So we don't know. This is a brand-new company. The only other city that we could find that is using them is Monticello. So we're kind of guinea pigs here, but we're willing to take that risk to save the money. So because we have good people, we have safe people, we have a safe city, we have a safe community, and hopefully, we don't need to use it. But there was a lot of discussion at the Finance Committee.
And I can add to that, as somebody who has workers' comp and deals with workers' comp, Bitco is not a new company. They're new to Minnesota. They're a very large company.
But they could not, we could not find anybody aside from...
Because they're new to Minnesota.
And anyplace else in any other state.
In Iowa. They're pretty, they're pretty thick, man.
No, we couldn't find them in Iowa.
Thing I realize with workers' comp, as somebody who deals with it, workers' comp is so regulated in the state of Minnesota that it's, you know, it isn't that risky, because workers' comp is extremely regulated.
Well, and that's what, and that's what, the risk is, we don't feel that there's a risk with what they're doing. We feel that the risk is, this year, we get the $146,000 cut. Next year, they catch up or maybe surpass. You don't know.
You'd never...
And that's the problem, is we don't know. And once we make this motion and pass it, we're in for three years. So we got to be really, you know, that's the due diligence, so...
Yes, I know what the league says. We have a very good mod rating. I can get into the whole mods and the whole thing on workers' comp. I don't think it's risky at all. Because with our low mod rating, another company would take us probably fairly easily and fairly quickly.
There's, and one of the things that our staff did for due diligence, looking into this, is that, once we leave the League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust on our workers' comp, we can't come back for three years. So our question was, is, well, is there an off-ramp? Is there a parachute if this does go bad? And there is. And it won't be, it won't be worse than if we stayed with League of Minnesota City. So the kind of the bottom line here is, if this turns out to be, and I don't believe it will be, but in just worst-case scenario, we're not putting the city at great risk financially as far as a teeter totter slipping the other direction. So I think we, as a committee, after looking it over and discussing with city staff, feel that this is a very prudent move, and it's a substantial saving. So... But it was a very good discussion, and I appreciate, along with Jim, I appreciate all the work that staff and the insurance representatives put into this. We had a lot of questions, and I think they had to do some digging. And, you know, it was a little bit weird, because we did look not just in Minnesota, and there were no other state, or no other communities other than Monticello that they could represent to us as a history. So...
In any states.
In any states.
That part really bothered me. I went home and researched the company a little more and see who they were owned by, Bitco is owned by, and they've been around for a really long time. They have a very good rating as a company, and so that made me feel a lot better about it, too. So...
Okay. Good discussion. Thank you to the committee that did a lot of background work on this recommendation. Any other questions before I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jim. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Well, now, move to Agenda Item Number 13. Our individual who will join us for this presentation is available now, so I'll call on Sharon Hansen to introduce this. The individual, and again, the agenda item is to consider the amendment to the Marshall Aquatic Center Phase 1 Agreement between the City of Marshall and Stockwell Engineers Incorporated. Sharon?
Just to make everyone aware, prior to the meeting, we didn't think Mr. Locke was going to be available until later. And during this meeting, just recently, he said he was. So I believe he is or on available via Zoom?
Yes, yes, I am. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can hear you, yes.
Going to have voice, is what you're saying, Steve?
Yeah, you could see me, but I will be in a snowing, and it wouldn't be a great image.
All right. So I'll just maybe introduce it, David. And we do have before the council an amendment to the Aquatic Center Phase 1 Agreement. And really, the main reason for this amendment is, when we first started the agreement with Stockwell, we were focusing in on the existing site. Through that process of discovery, input, stakeholders, things like that, we shifted to a new site location, and it did mean an amendment. There are some items in Phase 1 Agreement that still need to be completed, so they have not done all the work that was part of the original agreement. And those are some of the things that David is going to cover. And then we do want to give the council a preview of timelines, because we really think we need to move, once we complete Phase 1, which does include an additional stakeholder input session from the public, we want to move into design bidding document phase. Even though we know we don't have legislative approval yet, just kind of going back in time on how long this process starts, we don't want to be left in a behind, I guess. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I can certainly turn it over for David to expound further.
Okay. David?
Yes. Thank you, Sharon, Mayor, and Council. As Sharon said, we had, when we started this process, we were strictly looking at the existing Aquatic Center site. And through the public input and looking at the site area and constraints associated with that in terms of access and the amount of space available to accommodate a design that the public was going to be wanting, we looked at alternative sites to keep the design process moving and to assist city staff with identifying and looking at other potential sites, of which that has now been, you know, kind of more solidified, obviously, for the Schwan's site. And so, but that kind of initial assessment of looking at a variety of different sites and also ultimately developing concept plans and images for the Schwan's site property to assist with those negotiations was previously not a part of our scope of work. We also, as part of moving forward with developing more detail to the designs and starting to look at utility connections and availability, grading, and also then starting to look at where we want soil boring, soil investigation for the different aquatics elements and for the buildings. We need to do a survey of the site. We have previously surveyed the existing Aquatic Center site, which, you know, certainly will not go unutilized as a part of, when it comes to removing that facility and potentially putting, you know, back something different. But we do need to survey the now, the new proposed site of the Schwan's facility to start putting together preliminary schematic design documents and ultimately, construction documents. And so what we need to do, so the amendment is for the survey and the additional kind of site evaluations and investigations and designs that we did. The, from a timeline standpoint, moving forward, as Sharon said, there's still some elements of our current contracts that we have not fulfilled yet, just due to kind of the pause of looking at which site it was going to be at. And so we need to have more in-depth conversations with city staff and maintenance, parks maintenance staff to talk through the mechanical portions of the aquatics facility. So how we're going to do treatment. We'll also need to add some more detail to the building facility and what that restroom facility looks like, concessions, starting to look at what the finishes are for that facility. And so there's some more in-depth meetings that we want to have and need to have as a part of our current contract that'll help us get to a 35% design submittal, which that'll have a lot more detail to it. We'll have some more finite areas when it comes to sidewalk and building materials to develop cost, you know, more detailed cost estimates. We'll then also have a public meeting to present the, kind of what we're saying is going to be the final design of the Aquatic Center to the public and to the city council and to say, okay, here's what, you know, we're going to be moving forward with. Here's what we are estimating the cost to be. And then from that point, we'll want to enter into some more detailed design amendment with you guys for developing construction documents. That can happen, you know, after legislature approval, which I believe is in June. But from June, we want to be bidding this project in January of 2024. And so that allows us to start this design process with what we currently have under contract. And then, once we have legislature approval, we can really move into more detailed design and start developing construction documents for advertising and bidding the project right away in January of 2024.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions at all?
Any questions? The other thing about that, those planning documents will be also good for communication to the public between the legislative approval and the referendum vote, so...
Yes, we absolutely, you know, as we continue to move through that design, it'll, we can provide any, you know, necessary renderings, documents, you know, attending of additional public meetings. You know, if there's a citizen group that is going to, you know, be formed to maybe kind of take the reins with doing some... formed to maybe kind of take the reins with doing some fundraising, you know, they may, it may be good to have them lead some of those public meetings as well to really, you know, we want to make sure that we have good public support for this project and for the vote that would happen.
So, those activities would be included, included then with this amendment agreement? Or the amended agreement?
Not with this amendment. This, this amendment gets us through 35% design.
Okay.
And then that's what we were currently under contract for, and this amendment adds a little bit to that in terms of just the changing of the sites, the addition of site evaluation, the, the topographic survey that we're going to have to do. And then, once we get the design and costs finalized and everyone's saying, yep, let's move forward, this is the concept we like, then we got to move into, you know, 60%, 95%, you know, really get into the nitty-gritty details, so to speak, of the construction documents. And then that's where we'll have an amendment to, to move forward with that. I would say, I would anticipate probably in June, once the legislature has given this project approval.
Yeah, I guess I was just thinking of the renderings and things that you talked about for the community engagement and some of those earlier on meetings.
Oh.
That's what I was after.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, absolutely. We would develop all of those, any necessary renderings, visuals, plans for, for the meetings, the public meeting, absolutely. That's, that's a part of our contract and that's what, and we will certainly do all of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for David? If not, Sharon, anything more to add? Any questions the council has about the requested amendment to the Phase One Agreement? If not, is there a motion for that amendment?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Jim, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Craig, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. I'm sorry. We got, we. It doesn't show up on his. You want to take a look at it?
It was there earlier.
Now, we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda item number 14 is the wastewater rates, uh, thank you, David, if you're still on. So, we'll move then to agenda item number 14, wastewater rate study. The action item would be, consider the acceptance of the wastewater rate study proposal with Bolton and Mink. I'll call once again on Jason Anderson. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Included in the packet, you've got a letter proposal from Bolton and Mink for a wastewater rate study. The last time we've done a rate study like this was 2009. City staff just believes it's a good time for us to take a look at our, our costs at the wastewater plant and make sure that we're allocating costs properly for different processes at the wastewater plant. So, this is just to review our rate structure, make sure everything looks in line, and Bolton and Mink would likely make some recommendations through this process. Estimated cost not to exceed $20,000 will be billed hourly by Bolton and Mink, and the wastewater budget does have this, these funds for this in their line item budget.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So, when, we just did a revamp of the wastewater treatment and building it and all that. Wouldn't Bolton and Mink put this cost into that estimation when we redesigned the wastewater treatment and put all the upgrades into it? I mean, that would be part of a business plan if you're building something. You know the costs that are going in, you know what the costs are going to have to be to, you don't know for sure, but you can estimate in that business plan going forward what your rates are going to be with all the new things to cover your costs and make sure you're competitive as much as you can be because obviously, this is a monopoly. We don't have sources of water that.
Yeah.
You have alternative to city water.
Yeah. Short answer is, you know, no, that, that project was just design and administration of, of an enhancement and equipment replacement at our, our plant. Really what we're looking at is, is how we build different uses, residential versus industrial, for example. You know, we've got significant industrial users, we call them, we have SIU agreements with them where we identify how we're going to charge them for CBOD, total suspended solids, phosphorus, things like that. And there's rates assigned to that. And in the last couple of years, we've seen changes in maybe operating costs, maybe due to enhancements or changes over the last 15 years at the plant. You've seen chemical costs change, you just see a lot of different things. We know what our future capital cost might be at the plant as we start to look at the regulating, regulatory environment tightening up and we see, we, we see in our future more projects at the plant. So, it's taking all of that future stuff into consideration, not the past so much, but is the future, and make sure that we're allocating costs where they should be allocated and that we're charging, who we should be charging, what we should be charging them.
Are there, are there alternatives, Jason, to Bolton and Mink? I mean, Bolton and Mink does a great job, they do great work, but again, in lieu of tightness and things like that, are there other people that we should get contracts for bids from?
Yeah.
Or that we can get? I mean, they might be the only ones who do it.
No, good question. I would say, no, they're not the only one who does it. We, we did not seek alternative quotes for this work. We asked, in, in the essence of timing and with short staff, we asked them for a number. We do have the right to hire them, their professional service. If we like the number and the council wishes to go forward, we can hire them. They are intimately familiar with our wastewater plant and our wastewater systems. They've been the primary engineer of record for most of the projects out there in the past, I don't know, I would say probably 20 years. So, we, we thought that it made the most sense. We did talk a little bit with MMU about utilizing who they use. Didn't make sense, that, that company works mostly in water electric, it's through MRES. But we could look at any number of engineering firms. We, I guess we chose to go with this one. The number looked, looked fair and reasonable to us and they'll bill us hourly.
Thank you.
Any other question for Jason? We did have a.
We accept the proposed rate study with Bolton and Mink.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
I second that.
Seconded by C., discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the next agenda item. This is agenda item number 15. This is related to the airport's snow removal equipment building, a project update as well as the authorization to advertise for bids. Once again, Jason Anderson, city engineer, director of public works.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we started down this path a while ago. I concluded some of the past, history of council action and other action in the memo for your reference. This is a project to create a, a storage building at the airport for our snow removal maintenance equipment. There's numerous large pieces of equipment out there that are stored across multiple buildings at the airport right now, utilizing space that could possibly be opened up for rent, for example. But this is a project that has numerous funding sources and complexity, and that's why we started it quite a while ago and, and started to build the project and started to bank funds. So, we're using some FAA AIP funds for this. We've banked $600,000 of those funds. We've loaned out $150,000 to one airport to receive back in this construction year, and we intended to loan out another $150,000. We actually ended up only loaning out roughly $15,000 because we used, we used some of those funds on design. But at any rate, we've been loaning out funds and banking funds and putting it together to go along with state aeronautical grants and local dollars to, to finance this project. So, it's, it's complicated and there's a lot of process, but we're, we're working through it and we're on the path. So, included in the, in the packet, I've got kind of a rendering, architectural rendering, preliminary drawing that was shared with the Airport Commission for your, for your viewing, kind of identifies that the building's an insulated metal wall panel type of building, steel, steel building, nothing too fancy. It's pretty much a large garage space. On the north end, there's a small office break room, bathrooms and mechanical room with a mezzanine above it for storage of parts and, and things like that. Also included in the, in the plans, or our plans for site plan and different building views for your, for your viewing. To help us out with this, we had Ron Helgerson of the Airport Commission involved in this process to work with the architect at TKDA and, and help provide some outside guidance and vision, and we really appreciated his help. I think it was really important to have him involved with that, so I want to throw a thank you out to him for that. Airport Commission, PIT, has reviewed this project. I believe at the, at the meeting, we talked briefly about general costs and, and what the building is. Current cost estimate has risen since we've probably talked with PIT. You know, we're up to a total cost of roughly 3.34 million, I believe it is. Federal funding, AIP funds, 764,000 roughly, bipartisan infrastructure law funding at 578,000, state funding at a million, and local is now up to just over a million on estimate, based on engineer's estimate. So, that's where the project sits. What we're here today to ask for is council authorization to advertise this project for bids and to seek bids. I think I included in the memo a schedule. I did. With your approval, we would have a bid opening on April 3rd, and we'd come back to council on April 11th, looking for approval of bids if, if you see fit. This puts us on a schedule to begin construction this fall and finish it next year in 2024. So, I think that's what I have for now and I can help answer questions, but we would recommend to move forward, solicit bids and revisit those with you in a month.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Craig, any input from the Airport Commission?
Yeah, there's been an awful lot of work done, a lot of discussion up to this point, and this really is, you know, like Jason described, a pretty rare opportunity of all the different funding sources coming together and, you know, it's, the timing on this is really pretty important because if, if we don't move on it, there's a, a lot of those outside sources will not be there as we go. So, I think it's probably our best opportunity from the city fund side to get the most for the amount of money that we're investing in. And again, I think that, you know, it's been in, in MinDOT Aviation's wheelhouse and, and their view too, that there's a need there. We're building a little bit more in there than, than they think for just the pieces that they're interested in, and that's why the city contribution is as high as it is. But there truly is a need to get that equipment consolidated into one building. We've got rentable space that could go out, the T-hangers for, for public rental that we're holding on ourselves just simply because we don't have room for our stuff any other way. So, I think it's important to move forward for a number of those reasons.
One question I had, Craig or Jason, is the, are there any restrictions on the use? You know, the title is snow removal equipment, but in the future, if there would be scheduled air so that there would be a requirement for a fire apparatus at, on-site, could one of the bays be used for that?
Would you like me to handle that?
Yeah, why don't you go?
Okay.
That's been a lot of discussion with the, with the Airport Commission, so.
Yeah, so, a great question, Mayor. This building is designed in such a manner that right off the north end of the building, so the, the end that you see, kind of the windows there, you can add on at that point and go further north and add what we would call an ARF facility, which is an airport firefighting.
Okay.
Facility. So, that would be a future addition in the event that scheduled air service is secured and we need, and we're required to have that. So, this building is designed with that in mind, but recognizing that there's not a need for that today.
Okay, thank you.
If you pull up page 108 in our packet, it shows that future design on there.
Yeah.
And I think as, as a proponent who's been talking that, for daily air service, I mean, that's looking into the future, I think we need to continue to do that. You know, I, I've, I've been one saying, I think Marshers had it 20 years ago, but Northwest Airlines went bankrupt and it fell through. So, it's something that we need to keep striving for, to be competitive in this society, that's something we need to keep striving for, and I think this is a good investment toward that.
Any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation to authorize going out for bids on this project. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jim, is there a second? Seconded by John, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. Motion does pass. Move then to the next agenda item, which would be the, consider the resolution requesting MinDOT for the marked crosswalks. Once again, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. MinDOT started this conversation a few months back. They've got some projects coming up along US 59 and Highway 68 in Marshall. I forget the exact timeline of those projects, but they've got like a micro mill and overlay project and they've got some ADA work. And as they bring these projects forward, they like to ask the municipalities to enter into formal agreements to take over some of these maintenance tasks. And one of those tasks is marking painted crosswalks. So, we originally discussed all the crosswalks along the corridor. Upon further conversation with MinDOT staff, it was agreed that the state highway legs and the state highway signalized intersections would be their responsibility, local road legs and unsignaled crossings would be local responsibility. So, I think that's a, a fair agreement because if the council chooses not to enter into this, they just won't paint them. They're not required by their regulations, we're essentially requesting them. So, there's numerous locations along the corridor and they're identified in the resolution where these markings are. They would put them in the first time with the project, we would have to maintain the markings with our local forces. So, we would recommend that we enter into this resolution. It is, it's a fair resolution and we've worked at it back and forth with MinDOT for a little while now.
Jason, I have two questions. The, the proposed RRV, if I have that title right, at A Street, would that be their responsibility?
Good question. So, we did have that grant application that we put in for an RRFB push-button pedestrian crossing at A Street and 59. That would all be local responsibility. So, when that infrastructure goes in, the grant and local dollars would pay for that, and then the long-term maintenance and responsibility would be local there as well.
Okay. Then my other question, in your discussion with MinDOT, is the micro overlay still being proposed for, for Highway 59 south of College Drive? Given that, the amount of settling that's happened, you know, even recently and we're going into a, kind of a tough period, it's already showing the same issues that we had before that they had to, you know, do the rectifying?
Yes, another good question or, or statement. That, that area is kind of falling apart, we all know that, between A Street and, I don't know, is it H? I, I forget which street it goes down to, but there's that segment of 59 that's not in good condition. They've patched it numerous times, they'll continue to patch it this, early this summer. After July, when they get into their next fiscal year, they, they do have funds to come in and do the, I'm butchering the name, I forget what they call it, but it's an ultra-thin overlay, I think is what they call it, to provide a better riding surface. But they are aware that there's still more full-depth patching that has to occur before they do that work because, like you mentioned, it's not in great condition.
Okay. Other question for Jason?
Jason, I have a question. How often would the crosswalks have to be maintained or repainted?
We would review them annually and likely have to do some painting annually, but it just depends on where they're located and, and the amount of traffic or, or turning movements on them. So, at intersections, it's usually a higher burden than just a straight portion of the highway. So, we'd, we'd review them annually and we would just assume they need to be maintenance annually.
Any other questions?
It, it also depends on the product that gets put in. If they put a higher quality product in, it can last longer.
Anything else? If not, I'd entertain a motion on the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion by Amanda, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jim, discussion? If not, we'll. If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Move then to Agenda Item Number 17, Commission Board Liaison Reports. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple times now, Sharon and I have met with members from the Southwest Amateur Sports Commission and Convention and Visitors Bureau, and basically discussing what's the future of the Southwest Damage Sports Commission. Initially, it was organized, I think, a lot to help promote the design and construction of Red Baron, and, you know, to facilitate the ball fields and some upgrades at some of the other facilities, mostly participated with MABA, Maha, Southwest State, and the school, the high school. And so there's been a lot of discussion about what's the purpose. So we're meeting to kind of decide what is the focus, what's the future of Southwest Damage Sports Commission, and who should all be welcomed in and included. So those conversations, I believe, are going to continue. But we're kind of in a change mode. I personally feel, being the council liaison, to that there's a value and a need for that, but we need to make sure that the mission and the expectations benefit the other members and the associations. So more to follow. And if there's people have ideas and input, probably share them with Sharon and the other people that are more mentally connected and have a better job of remembering it and bringing it forward. But other than that, I don't have anything else to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Steve?
So my Adult Community Center did not meet, Cable Commission did not meet, but Economic Development Authority, we spent most of our time, sounds like a segue from Southwest Amateur Sports Commission. We were focusing, because we have so many new people on the board, focusing on where we are going to put, there's so many things that we want to do. The demand is unlimited, but the supply and how we do things and where we focus our energy to get the best return on investment is the hard thing. So we spent most of the meeting figuring out what are the five things that we're going to do, and that's what we did. And a lot of good brainstorming.
Good. Amanda?
EDA, I think Steve just covered. Planning Commission hasn't met yet, and Public Housing Commission couldn't meet because of weather, so.
And my assignments have not met since our last meeting. John?
Marshall Utilities Commission met this afternoon to review, for approval, the award contract through Highway 23 Water Main Crossing Project. And that was awarded to TE Underground from Tyler. Should I report the amount?
Go ahead.
Okay, and the amount of $579,625. We had six bids, competitive bids, and TE got won the bid.
Okay. Thank you, John. C?
Sharon, do you want me to mention the library meeting coming up, or?
Yes.
Okay. There is a library meeting coming up with the library board, with the city and the county, next week, March 7. So I'm not sure what we're talking about yet. I love you, want to elaborate, Sharon?
I'll wait until we meet.
Okay.
I don't want to put out any pre-planned thoughts. We're open-minded, so.
And then the other two haven't met yet, so.
Okay, thank you, C. Jim?
Mine didn't have me.
And we'll move on to council member individual items. Jim?
The only thing I have tonight is, I got several calls on the great job the city staff did in the storm. You know, usually you just have citizens call and complain. I actually had people call and say that it was very impressive with the storm. Our city was open by Thursday evening. And I was talking to a good friend, Craig Schaefer, because I know he drives a truck, and he gets bored, and he likes to talk your ear off. And he was-
Only when I get called.
And he was, I don't know what town you're driving through. He was driving through a town on 212 on Friday, I think it was.
Olivia.
I wasn't going to name the town, but-
Well, its initials are Olivia.
Yeah. There's no ones that moved from there downtown yet.
No.
Through ours, it was wind drove twice, cleaned up, and that's a credit to our staff, 100% to our staff, and to us as a council member, making sure that we have the equipment to do it.
Jim, it so looked like that Friday, too, by the way.
Friday, so, you know, and that helps our businesses. Our businesses on Main Street Thursday could be open by noon, no problem. They could be open at 9 o'clock. There's no reason they had to be closed, and that's a benefit to our city. So and I did call Dean Cooter and complimented him, too, on those compliments. And it's just, I'm glad citizens call and they recognize that, and they did a great job. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you, Jim. C?
I don't have anything.
John?
Nope.
Craig?
Just to follow up on Jim's snow removal, just remind people, if you have a fire hydrant on your block or, you know, in where you're working on the sidewalk, please try to clean that out. I see a lot of them are, but with this last snow we got, and, you know, the city's pushing and trying to give us as much street, and of course, that means they're burying hydrants, burying sidewalks. If you can adopt a fire hydrant or two and get them cleaned out, and God forbid you needed to use them, or the fire department, I guess, needed to use them, you don't want them spending time shoveling those out. That's all. Thank you.
And Steve?
I would just like to extend a thanks to Sharon and Dean for letting me ride along with the snowplow drivers to see, that's a lot of work, and it's a lot of job, and people can help us out, help the city out by moving your cars during the snow, because that will slow it down a lot. And you've got to remember that there's a lot of snow, and if you don't want your car buried even more than it could be, you know, and you want to use your road, get your car out of the way. But they did a great job, and it's a lot of work.
So you with them at 4:00 in the morning and I drove by and they're windrowing downtown, or did you wait till after coffee break?
I will not divulge my time. It's a secret.
I've got nothing.
The, I would just echo what's been said as far as thanking our public work staff. It'd also include our communications staff, too, because through this, we really tried to keep the public informed, and Alex was great about keeping the messages out there, and when we needed to have messages for public safety or public works, that our public was, had that message. And, you know, the, that was the way they received information about a lot of things during the blizzard. You know, the winter is not over, and we do have a significant amount of water on the landscape, you know, roughly estimated four inches of water that is in the snowpack, especially upstream. So as we talked about on the bus tour this afternoon, you know, anticipating the snow melt, but also recognizing that the city not only is well-prepared for dealing with the precipitation that falls, but we're also have really a good plan for both our stormwater and floodwater protection. So I think we're in good shape there. Just a couple things. The, since our last meeting, there was one hearing that I testified on for the sales tax extension. There will be more hearings. There is a hearing Monday morning, or Monday early afternoon, about the tuition forgiveness program for workforce development in Southwest region. So that will be Monday, and that'll be in person at the Capitol. A lot of other activity with legislative action that's going on, so, and much of that will impact the city, so we have a lot of things to keep track of there. The MinDOT District 8 Area Transportation Partnership will meet on Friday. Jason, I think you and I will both be attending that. So the, and that's important, because that sets the pipeline for the, both state and federal investment in state road projects in this region. And, you know, they're dealing with, you know, not only the projects that are funded by the traditional funding mechanisms that are funded by gas tax, but they're also have, you know, dealing with the increased funding from the IRA and IIJA federal funding, and then how is that going to be invested best within the state and hopefully within our region. So that'll be an important meeting. Hopefully, the weather cooperates so that we can be there in person. I guess I chair it, so I have to be there in person, so.
Just leave early and come home late.
Right. So with that, we'll move then to the next agenda item, which would be staff reports, starting with Sharon.
March 8 is State of the City, and I did email you just before the city council meeting. If you wanted to attend, Amy can register you. It is over the lunch hour. So that is Wednesday.
I would like to register if she can take care of that.
Yeah. Wednesday, March 8, and then March 17, staff is going to meet to finalize this indoor recreation study. I know it's taking a little bit longer, but it's okay. And then I know we talked about legislature a little bit. May 22 is the last day of legislature. So just around the corner. It seems like, I don't know, hopefully they can get our sales tax legislation approved by then. So, but I'm going to defer the rest of my time. I know we do have Public Safety Director Jim Marshall here, and obviously Jason Anderson, who may want to talk a little bit further about the snow emergency and any feedback or comments they may have gotten. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. The, with that, Jason, and is there going to be like a handoff here to Jim, or how was this?
Yes.
So.
I'll build upon what Councilmember Alcorn stated regarding the bids at MMU. Just to clarify, that was a project that was designed by our engineering department on behalf of MMU, like our traditional relationship. Just seeing that that's a Water Main-only project, we felt it best that their commission review and award that project, and I'm glad to hear that they did this afternoon at a special meeting. So that's good. So we will administer that project like we typically do. Other projects, just to keep you abreast of, you know, next week, we've got numerous bid openings. March 7, we have Channel Parkway resurfacing and our local Millen overlay project. So that'll be good to see how those numbers come in. I hope we're a little better with our estimating than we were with the Seal Coast this year, but seeing how oil seems to be, we'll cross our fingers. Legion Field Pond, Phase 2 Pond is on March 8. That was supposed to open this week, or excuse me, last week, but we did an addendum to move that date. We had to work some changes out in the plans, but we'll open that on the 8. And March 9, the Downtown Third and Lion Project is set to open. So hopefully, when we come to you at the next council meeting, there's a whole slew of project awards to consider, and hopefully, they're all well under budget. But we'll see. I think that's all I've got. Other than the snow emergency, I guess, thank you to everyone who cooperated with the snow emergency and moved your vehicles. As Councilman Meister indicated, that's a huge, huge time saver and just a productivity and efficiency saver. Helps us clear curb to curb and do a good job. The people operating the plows are juggling a lot of things in there. There's a lot going on. It's not as easy as people think, and thanks for taking the time to go along, I guess, as well. And I'll just build upon what Councilmember Schaefer said with the cleaning of the hydrants, also intakes. You know, when we get rain or melt, having the intakes cleared goes a long ways, too, and you see every community struggles with that. It's just great if you've got one and you can help us. We appreciate it. Jim, do you want to jump in on the snow
So welcome, Chief Jim Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Don't have to go into a long recap of what had happened, but, you know, we just don't shoot from the hip in these events. There's a lot of pre-planning that goes into it. We all had advance notice of what was going to be coming, and it was approximately about a week to, a week ago, when the first phase of the storm hit. Prior to that, we had a number of discussions with city leadership, with Sharon, with the mayor, and just not with us, but other organizations outside of the, outside of city functions. Hospital, for example, we need to make sure that they have a game plan in place, and to see what we can do to help them with their plan, and ensure those that are in crisis get the care that they need. A lot of discussion that went into this prior to the storm coming, and we did declare a snow emergency declaration. One of our goals, I think, early on with our discussion was to be transparent with our community and kind of highlight our expectations of what we needed from them in terms of snow removal and moving of cars. And it's always a difficult subject sometimes to talk about towing cars, but we declared that snow emergency declaration on Wednesday at noon. We gave some forgiveness to our community, because what we did on Wednesday was go around and give warnings to those that were in violation of parking, to give them fair warning to move those cars. On Thursday is when we started our process to clean the streets from curb to curb a little bit better, and that included towing. Unfortunately, we had to tow 27 cars. I can tell you that the police department gets no joy from having to do that. Takes a lot of manpower and a lot of time to pull that off, and in turn slows down the process, as you had indicated, when those cars aren't moved. So it went well, and I appreciate all the positive comments, and it really goes towards public work. So, and the snowplow drivers, they did a great job. It's early morning and late night, late days for those guys. Any questions?
I have a question. I have a comment, and it goes back to how you said planning, and it's even credit to Dean. You said the hospital plans, because obviously I plow snow out to sleep in, and that road is open by 5:30 in the morning, so those employees could get to work. And I think they did that to all the hotels, because the hospital and the other facilities had filled up the hotels with their employees. And the street department, and your planning, I give you guys credit, they were opened up, and those people got to work and got back to the hotel that night, and it's just, it worked really well.
Did. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Jason?
No.
Okay. If not, City Attorney Pam Woodmore?
Don't have anything for the good of the whole. I just want to say thank you to Steve, and the votes show up beautifully on the screen, so I can see all, how everybody votes.
Very good. Any questions for Pam? If not, then we'll move then to the remaining items on your agenda this evening, which include the building permits and the listing of upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to come forward at this meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Amanda, seconded by Jim, to adjourn. Discussion on that motion. If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. The motion passes. We are adjourned.